I'll call the meeting to order has been properly noticed.
Yes, it has.
Recognitions, anybody from the board have anything? Anybody from the audience have anything?
Just like to recognize the class of 2022, we celebrated their commencement, was wonderful speeches, and just, yeah, just a great way to celebrate a really challenging few years for them. And it was, it was great to have everybody in the gym with the air conditioning on and enjoy a wonderful ceremony. So special thank you to those that helped organize that, as well as school counselors, music staff for preparing the special music and the speakers that did a wonderful job. And the board members there were help out hand diplomas. Thank you.
Good to see you got all your ducks in a row.
Yes.
Unexpected, it sounds like.
It was a little unexpected.
A couple of recognitions, PTO, Janelle Davis and Betsy Williams have been members of the PTO for, for as long as I've been a principal anyway. And their youngest has finished eighth grade, so they are done with the PTO. But they're, they've definitely left their mark. PTO donated, I couldn't even tell you how many, how much money throughout the years under their leadership. Last donation was a thousand dollars for each grade level to go to the different field trips. And we had kids all over. They, we had up to the physics, Madison Physics Department lab, the biochemist up in Madison, sixth grade. We had the Cokeria Caves, we went to Mount Olympus. We've been to the Mounds Rope Course down in Dubuque. And that was a first trip for us. It was just fun to have kids experience that. And special thanks to PTO and to those individuals. We turned the corner for summer school. We secured a grant thanks to Jessica Brogley. We had a thousand dollars worth of fishing equipment through Cabela's that our kids are going to be using some better equipment than I have. And so I'm excited for, for again, creating those opportunities and just leaving that impression for them. So I'm excited for summer school to start next week.
Well, we've had a busy last two days for sure. But I need to thank our PTO also because they paid for our dung tanks and for the ice cream truck for restaurants to be at Field Day on Monday. And thank my FIAI teachers for organizing Field Day, especially Joe Terrell, who takes the lead. And this was the first time in 18 years I convinced him to go inside. And we put it inside because we thought it was going to rain. So we had Field Day inside, but it still worked out. But we now know why we have it outside most days. And then yesterday, we had a great end of the year. And we changed up our family day at the end and did outside yard games. It was more just a playtime and parents to socialize. We had a great turnout for that, a lot of parents and a lot of kids running around. And it was a good day, so good end of the year.
I'd like to give accomplishment to our music and choir people. They had a great pops concert last night. If you haven't been to one of our pops concerts, I would suggest to go. It's usually the Monday right after graduation. There was 20 different groups singing and doing things. And it was just a great night to have the kids show off their talents. And another thing that we, we accomplished this year, we are going to get hopefully the WIAA Award of Excellence. This is set forward because our sports teams volunteer, at least three of our sports teams volunteer and give back to our community. There's like 20 different categories that we have to meet. And our kids also do some volunteerism. Then our coaches also take some NFHS courses along with that. So wasn't for our kids and coaches, we wouldn't be getting this award. So thank you.
At the Early Learning Center, we had our kindergarten and 4K go to the zoo. I might have told you already last time about the kindergarten going to the zoo. But it was a good opportunity for them because of our new reading series. They learned so much about animals, so this was the first year for that. So now we won't do that again next year. It'll just be 4K and then they'll come into kindergarten having that experience of being at the zoo before they're learning about it. So I think that'll be great. The last day of school, our kindergarteners went to Smith Park and enjoyed sack lunch there. And our 4K had a 4K program in the gym that is now air conditioned. And so it was the first time we had anything in there with air conditioning. And we turned it down to 66 to cool it down. We had 325-ish people there. And it just was beautiful with air conditioning for all the adults and people that had mobility issues. You know, we were able to move them where we needed to and they were able to enjoy it too. So it was really nice that we had one grade level because when you park at Neil Wilkins, you really don't have more enough room for parking. We're still going up into the street with just one grade level. So I was happy that we had kindergarten go to Smith Park and that worked out really well. So PTO also bought all of our kids ice cream for the end of the year. So we want to thank them too.
Jim?
I do have a thank you that the district office received and it is directed towards board members. So if we can just pass that around?
All right. Opportunity for public input. Anybody signed up? No, all right. Information and discussion items, review of student behavior expectations.
So in the board's packet, they have an electronic version of each of our building's student handbooks. Also included in the packet is a document from DPI that we also used when we create these student handbooks. There's an explanation of what FERPA is, captures that. There's also a couple of policies in there to look at and review. So the hope is that the board has a discussion and discuss the handbooks as they are. Are there areas that we would like to see improved? Are there areas that need adjustment? I have instructed the administrators to sit back and take notes and listen to the input that the board is providing. At the July board meeting, which is an annual event, is when we approve our student handbooks for the next school year. So with that process in place and with the board really talking vision, talking policy, this is an opportunity to have that input. So then the administrators can go do some work and then we present these back in July for possible board approval. And at that, I would just leave the floor open for discussion.
I, I think there are two areas that I just have questions about and mainly because of the work that we're trying to do in higher ed with just equity and grading. I look at the grading policy and I know that standards-based grading and the one through four that's used in everything up until high school is generally, it's one through four. So it's very different. It took parents a while to get, understand that. But at the high school, we still have different places where it seems like a student's behavior is impacting their grade, not actually what the student knows and is able to do. An example of that is the unexcused absence and makeup work, where the makeup work, if it's missed, will still be reduced by 25%. And that's a behavior, that's a circumstance, and that's not what they know are, are able to do. So that, that is something that I just wonder if we could maybe discuss or have, have some thoughts on. I don't know if anybody else has any.
What you're saying is that it's a behavior that causes students to turn in assignments late.
It could be.
So we don't want to penalize for, for late assignments?
Well, we can, we can have them redo makeup, makeup assignments, but actually taking away from what they, it's an academic grade, it's not a behavior grade. I mean, you could put that behavior grade somewhere else with a responsibility pass or something. I mean, if we are truly going to give people a grade that is a representation of what they know and are able to do, why are we allowing a behavior or circumstance? What if my unexcused absence is because my parent can or cannot call in for me on time? Or, I mean, if there's a circumstance that's beyond their control, I don't, I don't see that, that, that may or may not impact their academic grade period without it actually being penalized for a behavior that at times is actually out of their control. I mean, I think it's, it warrants a discussion on what does a grade mean? Does it mean you have every support you need and you're, you're, I mean, it's actually kind of a biased system when you think that. I mean, if I, if I don't have transportation because something happens in my family where that, I mean, why am I being penalized academically? You know, I think that's really a, to me, that it's a traditional old system that actually started back in the 1700s because of us trying to, the industrialization of, of education. And this is like a throwback from that. And using a 100-point scale is another throwback from that. I mean, the one through four is a much, you know, a much more concentrated and easy to understand scale for not only parents, but for students, they understand. You know, in the one through four, if you look at the, the other grading systems within the handbooks, it's understood what is excellent, what is, you know, what is minimal, what is not acceptable, rather than 78%. What is, what does that really mean? Can you tell me what is 78% is versus a 83%? What is the actual difference, right? So I think it's just warrants a discussion that's right now in, in much of, not only K-12, but in higher ed. This is a really important discussion we're having about.
And has been going on for years and we're still adding behavior into the grade. It, it is, the grade may not be a demonstration of, of what you know and are able to do. You take 25%, I, on my retake, I got 100%. I know this stuff, but now I'm down to 75%. Am I an A student or am I a C student? Do I know this or do I not know this?
And I think a lot about, you know, I, I did a presentation on a B student having a very bad day. So let's say you have a 16-week term. First two or three weeks, they're getting 85s pretty regularly. You're thinking, this is a B student. Week four comes along and think of Alexander's very bad day, right? That kid's world gets rocked for whatever reason and they get a big fat zero on something. It actually takes them 13 more Bs to get their grade back up to just an 80%. Is that really a true representation of the B student? You know, how do we really have this dialogue so that people understand that it, most of us, as a teacher, as a former educator, I inherited a grading system that I went through because that's how I was graded. But that doesn't mean it was right. That doesn't mean it was a representation. I mean, I was the kid who could do math, probably the way new math is actually. But that was a long time ago and the nuns didn't like it. So I never got full credit because I didn't show my work the way they wanted. But that's how it is in, in our system.
And I think we can say, we can all give examples of historically Albert Einstein being a very poor student. He's an A, he is a four, you know, that, that, that being graded on behavior and, and other things rather than what is the accomplishment.
And I think the three tenants of really equitable grades are, is it a true accurate representation of what a student knows and is able to do? Number two, is it bias resistant? Are we taking behaviors out that really could be because of the person having more, more support, right? And then the third one, is it motivational? You know, I'm going to do my late work, I'm going to hand it in, it's great work. I'm getting a 75. I might not do my best work. I might not really, I mean, if we're going to motivate students, how are we looking at it from the asset view rather than the deficit view of viewing? So I just, I just want us to maybe have that wider discussion.
Sounds like you want some flexibility for the teachers to be able to take into account outside factors.
Well, and I know it, and I came from a K-12 system as a K-12 educator for 14 years where we had something called the Responsibility Pass. That was a behavior grade. That didn't go in their academic grade. And at that time, they had open campus for juniors and seniors. So when you're a junior and senior, if you did not have class, you could go off campus, which I don't know that we want to get into that. That's not what I'm saying, but, because that is a nightmare. It was a nightmare for Monroe, like people were driving all over and being crazy. But the Responsibility Pass also allowed them to do things like, I think, some of the, some of the club work, you know, you could be an officer in a club if you had a RP, a Responsibility Pass of, of three or above. You know, it was, it was, again, it was the soft skill teaching that we can't, we don't want to lose responsibility and, and all the things that we work on. But sometimes our grades are not accurate, they aren't motivating, and they've got some bias against students that don't have what every student should have. So it's just something that I think we should maybe invest a little time in. As I was reading that, that just stuck out to me.
Are students allowed to resubmit work to be regraded or is that an individual teacher?
That's a individual teacher, right? And that's an individual teacher policy.
We'll have that answer next time.
You bet.
I would love to see more wording about, especially if we move towards more of that career readiness and college readiness, some of that language in, you know, you know, maybe the dress code that we're looking at, you know, business casual or, you know, pre-professional attire rather than focusing on what attire is disruptive and to whom. It tells you more what not to wear than what to, you know, than what, what our expectation is for our students. And I actually feel like a lot of the language in here, you know, especially general school rules, more of what we don't want than what our expectation is. And if we want them to meet that expectation, I think it's fair that we spell it out to both the student and the parent. What does, what does appropriate behavior look like versus, you know, inappropriate behavior shouldn't, shouldn't be permitted? Okay, but, but what's appropriate behavior then? What does that mean to, to people, to our school? To me, you know, the following directions and using appropriate tone and respect, you know, being respectful should be at the top of that list, not, not under the what's inappropriate.
So kind of elevating the Hillman Way. This is.
Absolutely. I mean, all of it. If you look at the Westview Handbook, you know, they have that mission and vision and what we envision, you know, front and center. And I, I don't see why that shouldn't be for all of like what that, that Hillman Way, like across the board, you know, again, what those expectations are. Especially when it comes to, you know, those behaviors and I hate the word soft skills. I'm not going to use that, but our character building.
And I do know that, I know that there are cell phone policies, but as far as protocols, I, I think we need to strengthen what we're doing. You know, I, I think it was, I don't know which school it was at, where I sent you a picture. I walked out in the hallway and they had placards of their cell phone policy.
Send a picture if you didn't have your phone out.
Yeah. I was getting warm in the middle of a freezing cold rainy baseball game I went into this school. But, you know, by every water fountain or water bottle fill-up, there was, you know, it just reminded them what the cell phone policy was in a very short. And, you know, it was nice when we were at.
We were at the Dell's for over two hours. And we saw one phone out by a student in a breakout room and we saw two phones out by teachers. That was it in.
And in the, in the rooms, there were the pockets or the, the storage areas for the phones. And I'm like, you know, we, we just have to get better at this because I think they're so disconnected and disrupted as their use. And, and I know it's a hard thing, I understand that. And some of our students are really going to struggle, but.
Probably the parents more than the students.
I think it's, yes, I mean, as a former educator, I've had people get phone calls from their parents in class. Like this is, this is not acceptable behavior for the adult. Maybe we could either have the discussion or have more, again, what is the expectation? Not just, we have a policy, what's the expectation?
Well, and it should be, be a uniform expectation too. And, you know, I'm, I'm sure that happens maybe at the beginning of the year with the individual teachers in the classrooms. But it's like, you know, you can't shoot a gun, you can't do this, you can't have your phone out. I mean, hopefully there's some uniformity in that as well. And that the expectation is, is that we don't use the cell phones during, you know, certain times. And if they do, then, you know, what, what are the repercussions of that? And is it being uniformly adhered to so that they know, you know, especially at the middle school level, I think.
And I think that, that can be communicated, but the big important thing first is why we don't want you to use them? What is, what is the problem? It's the, it's the distracted, disrupted learning cycle that is really at play here. It, it isn't the fact that we don't want you to have technology in your hand. No, it's, it's we want the use of that technology to be appropriate. And they sign a use policy, but I, I think it's, needs some, more and some more discussion. Those are the only things I have.
Anybody have anything else they could think of right now? Here's a thought, Jim, could we maybe give it, let's give it like 24 hours, review it? Get back to Jim within a day. If you can think of something more now that we've started a discussion, email Jim and disseminate it out from there. Would that be all right?
Yes.
Okay. So tomorrow night. Okay. Ready to move on? Facility improvement.
So I have in front of us a three-step process to get to a really significant moment in our referendum effort. Now, the first step is that I will walk through a slideshow and that kind of captures where are we at? We've had the survey, how do we respond? The operations committee met a week ago with our, our three partners in this effort. And it was very, it was fun work, it was intense work, but we really accomplished a lot. And the second step is we have updated maps, updated drawings of the different areas that are being addressed. We can go through those, but I don't believe that's necessary after we, we kind of talked through this. But they're there for reference. And the third step would be operations committee got together and we have it now down to two options. What are, you know, and let's discuss that, I'm sorry, let's discuss that. And when we're finished, we'll have an option that we really focus in even more on. Recall, leading up to August, that board meeting in August is when a school district must pass a resolution. So then at the November election, it can be on a ballot. So that's the timeframe. So we can start. And also, all of our staff were forwarded this, this morning as well. In reflection of the survey, one of the, the main messages that the survey told us from our community was that 52 million was too high of a number. So that number has been reduced down to 36 million overall project spending. So it's a 31% reduction. And now to go through the four buildings. On the left, we have priority projects. On the right, we have projects that remain in the future scope of a master plan. One way to capture this is we have phase one. That'd be the left-hand column. Phase two would be that right-hand column. Still items that we would like to accomplish, but based on the homework we've done, based on the survey, they have allowed us to prioritize these items. So Neil Wilkins has remained the same and that is what the survey supported. So Neil Wilkins has remained the same, and that is what the survey supported. Renovating that cafeteria and the kitchen area, creating, transforming the current multipurpose gym into that kitchen, Caphne Gym Natorium, multipurpose space, and then having a gymnasium addition added to the end of it. Westview Elementary, it's still the parent drive and parking. And if our district can improve that, we'll, we will be doing something. That is, we, we can do it. That'll be significant in, in just the safety of the issues there. At Plattville, Plattville Middle School, the additional bathrooms on the end of the hallway, and just recall the, oh, the 250 bodies using one set of bathrooms, so that's a need. And, and when those toilet rooms, bathrooms are added on, you can add classrooms with the same addition. And this is where the survey, the student survey is coming back, our tours are coming back. I, I believe gone are the days where you have that traditional classroom, where it's a door, it's three walls. Gone. It's more flexible, there's more natural light, there's more ability to move throughout that classroom. So those classrooms, along with some of the other ones, could be renovated with that flexible learning atmosphere. The gym storage, that is within the current gymnasium, and it's up on the stage. Now, the stage is not used for performances, it's currently used to store items, and those items multiply. Before you turn around, you've lost your stage. So it, it's an effort to make that a learning space. And the ADA stairs, that, the blue doors coming in, I, I've said this many times, the ADA entrance is separate from the regular entrance. We need to have that at the same place. And then in these two wings in our flooring, there are cracks. And there's a solution proposed, and I will not get into the details, but that's something that we, we need to fix. And the outdoor classroom was moved over to a phase two or a future scope item. The high school, which received the most feedback within the survey, and rightfully so, that was the most expensive item. So to jump over to the right-hand column, the, the two-station gymnasium addition is a phase two effort. On the left-hand column, we still have the cafeteria, we still have the kitchen. The CTE classroom addition, that is partnered with that auditorium renovation. So here is how this, this message is evolving. Previously, we talked about the auditorium, it's a difficult place to get to. Park away on one side, you walk the building. So the idea is, let's have a drop-off next to that entrance that already is labeled as welcome to the Plattville Auditorium. With that, we had decided, let's put a lobby with a ticket booth concession, so when we have our performances, it is a professional-level performance where people can come in and the crowd can gather out. The change is now, okay, you can have your lobby, but you can also have a learning space in that area. And that's the term that, that rose out of, out of the discussion, which is a flexible learning space or a flex space, and you'll see that on the maps. So it's a lobby for the hour before and the hour after a performance. All through the rest of the day, it's a learning space. With that remodeling in that area, we're taking away some learning classroom space, and that's where those additions are to the south. And with those additions, we've been able to listen, and those additions are now more focused on career and technical education. We can have our ag science there, we can have a commercial kitchen classroom there, we can have another classroom. One of the ideas that has risen, one of the ideas that has been brought up over the last month is, holy, holy cow, we have a great opportunity with getting our students involved in healthcare careers. So maybe those three rooms have a similar need when it comes to the plumbing to the electrical because of that, and, and they meld there. So that, that's a growing area. That's a change. And that's, that's the other thing that we have, we have told each other throughout this whole process. Don't get stuck on one thing. Listen, learn, rethink, reevaluate. The west parking lot, I'm sorry, go up to the outdoor activities complex. In short, those were two of the big-ticket items that the survey said people were questioning. The reason why the audit, the outdoor activities complex is in this phase one is because of the impact it will have on the amount of students and the amount of use that that facility will get during the school day as a learning, afterwards extracurricular, but also to build a partnership with our community, with our city, with all of the different organizations that could use an activities complex. And the new west parking lot be where our current track resides. More parking. If, if you've been to an event recently, that front parking lot fills up pretty quickly. So does the back, so does the existing east. And so more parking would be very helpful when we have events. An updated maximum tax impact on our mill rate would be 68 cents. Previously, with a $52 million referendum, that was a $1.55. Survey came back and was rather clear, $1.55 is too much. So we've reduced that. Go back to that first slide, it was a 31% reduction. We have to be very diligent that these are assumptions. Baird is our financial advisor, they look at everything they can. But in the bottom down there, the assumptions are 21 years of borrowing with an interest rate of 4.5 to 5. Referendum passes in November, we just can't go downtown and have, and get the loan. It doesn't work that way. It's a very legal process in which things are posted, and if I say anything more, I'm going to insult anyone with more financial knowledge than me. But it doesn't just happen. And that's why they put that cushion in for that interest rate. 4.5 to 5 is a, it's not an outrageous conservative guess, but it is, it is a conservative guess of where it might be. Also, another assumption is that an annual growth of 2%. Recent history is that our property values have grown more. But 2% is cautious. Remember, estimated maximum tax impact, and that's where we get to that number. The last two slides, we, we started introducing these last time, and these were concerns from the survey that we have declining enrollment. It is not declining. And what this slide tries to represent is, here's what our history is. And, and please note, we, we take these numbers from DPI. And that's where we reference these numbers, and that's where we secured them from. And the last slide would be the ESER funds update, another concern coming out of our survey, was what did you do with all of your ESER funds? We have a line item, we have all of the board action that controlled those purchases. We also have a graphic that just gives an idea. One of the concerns is, what have you done about social emotional learning? Well, that is represented. If that leads to a more direct question, we can then research and answer those programs that we've incorporated, the positions that we have, we've used. So that summarizes a, a lot of what came out of last Wednesday's operations committee. The next step would be, we could go through and look at those maps. I, I, I'm just not seeing the need right now, but if somebody would like to grab one, I can pull it up.
I just have one question about the FEMA gym in the Neil Wilkins. So will that be a gym that is a little bit more conducive to actually holding events, like overflow events? If you'd have a freshman JV and varsity tournament or something, whether it be volleyball or basketball, is that flooring going to be, have we decided anything about that potential? Or is the cost, I mean, because I worry that we might make the same mistake we made initially at Westview.
The scope of what that space will be dedicated for and designed for, we have not got to that stage. But I have heard on multiple occasions, think it through and make sure that it does have that, that ability. And that would be an investment. So the final stop is option one, option two. And we can talk through these, board members, you can discuss, hey, operations committee member, what was your feeling here? Give me some feedback. We also have present representatives from Myron Construction, Plunkett Rayish Architects, and also Point of Beginning, so you can ask even more detailed questions. In short, the difference between option one and option two is stated up there at the top with a practice field, not the competition field, but a practice field, could it be grass, could it be turf? And to help with that discussion, Point of Beginnings has provided a slideshow that really lays out the difference in the construction of turf versus a grass, irrigation puts in costs. I would caution, those are numbers that don't apply as far as specific dollar value. Use it as a way to compare the differences in those numbers. That is totally different project, it doesn't even pertain, it pertains, but don't get caught in that dollar amount as far as it's going to cost this much. Pay, pay attention to the difference. And towards the end of that, there is a, a piece where it talks about the cost per use over a certain period of time. I found that to, to help me reason through. So at this time, we have reduced, we have the phased approach. Right now, we're considering a $36 million referendum. I would hope that we leave this discussion with a direction of, hey, school district, let's head whichever option we want. And if needed, we have the experts here to talk to. Any of the other items of question or further detail? Go.
Well, I know that in the operations meeting, I, I did question why we would have to have a turf practice field. And I understand that I'm probably not in the majority on this, but when we're continuing to think about, how do we respond to them saying it's too much? Is this one thing, we could still have a nice usable area without it being another 1.2 million? I mean, isn't that what it is, the option, the difference?
No. It's not. Because you still, as Point of Beginnings said in that meeting, you still have to do something with that area up there. So he, he told us it's 1.2 million, but then you probably spend about $400,000 to seed it and get it graded, put the topsoil down and everything you need to have a grass practice field up there. So it's really probably $800,000, not the full 1.2 million.
But if the, but the only option in the, I mean, that's different in those two numbers, option one and option two, is that?
Yeah, the bottom line price there?
Yeah.
Yes, that's correct.
Isn't that close to?
It's 800, 800,000, yeah.
It's 800.
It'd be 568 plus 273.
But you would, if you did the grass option, I mean, there's got to be some, there's some cost if option one has a grass option. So there's no cost already in this for that?
It's figured into that 34.4. Correct.
Yep.
You want, I mean, you can discuss it from the meeting.
Scott, if you would, just walk us through.
Yeah.
You kind of get a feel for what we're debating right now.
Yeah. So we're looking at, what's that difference we have there? It's about six, 800,000, it looks like, about 800. So, so when you build a grass field, especially the soils that you have out there are a little suspect, they're clay, silty. So what you typically do when you're building an athletic or a practice or a green space that you can use a lot, you will do underdrain, you'll amend the topsoil, which means you're grinding in sand so it drains better. Irrigation, you put irrig-, so what you do is you spend all this money to put all the underdrain, storm sewer to dry it out, but then you got to put irrigation in to keep it wet. So what you're trying to do is manage it, right, so you can use it. That is about that, I think in the, in the presentation we did for Wasable, it was about that 350, 400,000. And like Jim said, those, the numbers in that was from a project we did before. And, and your project, it was, it was close to that ratio, right? It was about 1.2, and then we cut about 400,000 out for the, so you would have to spend 400,000-ish to build a grass field. So you're probably at a good spot to have that debate of one or the other, because if you put the, soon as you would spend all the money on the underdrain, the amended topsoil, that's where you would be, right? You wouldn't want to consider turf after that point. But now that you, you have that opportunity, whereas you could, if you're going to spend the 1.2 or the 400, it's really the $800,000 delta, I guess, is what you're, to do some round, doing some rounding with those numbers. And the one thing with the, the presentation that Jim put in the, your, on your computers there, that was, we really were debating, we had two, we had a grass expert and a turf expert at this, at the show. And really what, you know, the preferred surface to play on, if you really, if you ask any athlete, is grass. Now, you know what, what turf is trying to do is trying to replicate grass. But what happens is that when you start to look at the maintenance and all the stuff that it takes to take care of that piece of grass. And so if you looked, the spirit of that presentation was maintenance, it was cost of construction, which I think we had 1.1 and 3, you know, 300,000, so about that difference. But then it costs about 39,000 bucks to take care of that piece of grass with painting, fertilizing, aerating, irrigation, maintenance, all the, and if you go through that list, you'll see all the pieces and parts that it takes to take care of a piece of grass the right way. Whereas if you have turf, you just don't do that, right? You're, you're going to deep-tine it once a year, you're going to do some visual inspection, so it, so the man-hours really, what, that it takes to go out there and do all that work drops significantly. So that's, so that we compared the, the maintenance versus the cost. And then the one thing we did is we went to a, a school that just east of Stevens Point, and we interviewed them on a pre and post. What did they use their field for before they did the turf? And then what did they use it after? And that one slide shows, we call it an event, anytime that you, you know, head out and use the piece of turf. So, and there's some studies out there, you can see that it was the Timor River School District, they used it 67 times. They would use that through the course of the year, but the, the school was very protective on that field because they're, all their varsity events were on it, so they wouldn't let, you know, if you weren't playing soccer or football, you weren't out there, right? It was off limits. Then we, so there were 67 events, and then when we did the post-turf, I think there was like almost 900 events. So they were just, it's used non-stop. So, and what, what they found out, what the school found out is they were using it more from eight in the morning till three o'clock than they were with, you know, just for the, you know, for the sporting activities, where really that, that's kind of gets a bad rap that that's all it's for. So then we extended that for a 20-year lifespan. And we compared the cost of maintenance and construction for both, for 20 years, but then we divided it by the use. And that's where you see, it was actually even surprising to us. We knew, I thought that it was going to be a difference there, but it's actually, you know, it's eight to one in, in the study. So it's, it costs, it costs, it costs twice as much to do the turf, right? Actual money. But the price per hour of use is eight times less. So that was just the spirit of that whole, that presentation we did.
Is that the average lifespan is 20 years?
No, you, you see, in that, in that replacement program, you'll see in there, we, at year 10, we replaced the, the carpet again. So that, it's really, that's what it is, it's a carpet, right? So you're going to build your whole stadium, and you have a concrete curb, and at year 10, the warranty is at, is done at eight. But I'm going to tell you 10, just to budget, but I, but these turfs are, these fields are lasting, you know, 11, 12, 13, we're just replacing- lasting, you know, 11, 12, 13, we're just replacing Kimberly's field, and I think that is like 15 years, yeah. And that's, that's an older version, too. So I, you know, if you take care of that, it's a long ways out before you replace it. So that, that replacement piece of turf is in that price there.
So will we, as a district, have to get different, obviously, equipment to do the sweeping and dragging and brushing of the field, or is that a hired service?
No, that'll be in, that'll be, you'll have a piece of equipment that'll be in the, so when we bid that out, we will spec out a piece of equipment, a sweeper, a magnet, a deep tiner, that you will get. And you will be able to use that for both pieces of turf. We do recommend that you do hire whatever vendor you would select to come once a year and do some type of maintenance on it, because what they're doing then is they're also kind of signing off on your warranty, right? So they're, every, every year, they're there kind of doing their checklist. So I think it's worth, I think those maintenance plans are about 3,500 bucks a year to have them come out. They work with your staff, ground staff, to just make sure you're doing everything right. We recommend that, you don't need to, but it's a, we think it's a good idea.
Jim, what are we currently spending on the upkeep of our grass fields that we have here at the high school?
I do not know that offhand. And at best, I think it would be an estimate, but I can try and capture that as best I can.
Great, thank you.
How much use do we expect the practice field to get? Is the marching band going to be out there? You know, is it just going to be after-school practice events? Are we going to be able to use it for gym classes?
Finished my note.
Sorry.
The intent is to use this as much as we can, as often as we can, with as, as many groups that we offer, and also encourage our community. We, the, the one example that comes to mind primarily is our youth soccer. We have City Rec Soccer, we have Platteville Power Soccer, we have an adult soccer. We want those to use our field. We are a public school district. So that practice field, I would say, would be used during the school day, your physical education department. I, I don't, I'm not up to speed at all on marching band. I don't know how it would be striped. If it's a multi-purpose practice, maybe it would still have 10 yards and five yards because that's how they face out. I don't know that. But I have been gathering numbers of how many soccer games we play in the city of Platteville, and it's staggering right now with all the different levels. And if you have those two facilities side by side, you now have the ability to host multiple games at the same time, multiple age levels, and that way, parents can come, and it's, it's a tighter, it's a tighter day at the soccer fields. It just, without question, if it is there, I am extremely confident that it will be used more than even I can fathom right now.
At one time, we talked about the lights having the ability to do, to shine on the practice field as well, right? Was that discussed? I, I had to leave early, so I can't remember.
We discussed potentially stationing those, at least those two posts, so they could backlight to catch that soccer field, which then wouldn't be as bright, so we'd probably, down the road, if it got used heavily enough, you'd probably want to basically have everything there to put up lights on that other side eventually, I would assume.
Yeah.
Because I think that's where it would head. I believe that if we had this, you know, the kind of if you build it, they'll come thing. Because this is going to be the Legion Park, but of soccer. You know, Legion Field really is baseball, softball, but this would be of soccer. And soccer is the fastest-growing sport over baseball and softball right now. And so I think we serve a whole nother need, not just with our own students, which is first priority, but just community-wide in general, you know? And the city owns those soccer fields that connect up. Run contiguous with the high school, which is perfect. And then we still have another nice soccer field there, obviously, that we invested the irrigation and stuff in. My biggest thing, when I was looking at it, was if, if we're going to be practicing all the time, and we can practice on turf and we play on turf, to me, that makes the most sense. Now, are we going to play every away game on turf? No, we're not. But turf is becoming more and more prevalent at all these schools, you know? I mean, Point of Beginning can tell you what he's doing, and then obviously, he's got competitors, too. So we're going to be playing more and more on turf also. We used to be unique in that we were the only school that played on turf besides people that went to Camp Randall, you know, with the college, but that's not going to be the norm anymore, I don't think, so.
At one time, you talked about softball being able to have a footprint in.
Yep.
Because I know that at times, at, when I was at the first seat, the women's softball, because of their field, they, before they had it, they would play at the stadium.
Where did you just say they did that, Scott?
We just did that in, for Menominee.
Yep, Menominee.
UW South, that Menominee, and they had a, we striped a softball field, right, on the turf. And it's not going to be their varsity competition, but what they're doing is it's a Band-Aid from early March, right, to when it gets warm enough, so they can put up some back, it's a, be a temporary backstop and temporary fence, they can play some games, soon as it warms up, then pull it down and, you know.
I think if we had a practice field turf. We'd be wise to potentially have that one look really busy from a line standpoint, right? You know what I'm saying? So it can be used for anything.
And that's, right now, in the Madison area, I mean, lacrosse is huge.
Yeah.
And I saw Prairie, I think, that, right?
Yeah. I mean, lacrosse is really coming on strong. We were just talking about that before, that that field is one that you could maybe stripe for lacrosse, or you could put, you know, get, get busier with your lines. Lacrosse is, and soccer is huge. Even the, the study that we did, if you read through those numbers, the soccer numbers are the one that just exploded. That, that's, that was a big portion of that 899 uses. So, and they were really pushed off that field in your, in the previous years, they weren't allowed to use it. So, and then if you, if you just went to our website, too, and looked Hudson, which Hudson's track is very similar to the track we're proposing here, they have a, a big piece of turf in the back. It's a little bit bigger than the one that we're proposing for you guys, but they did, they have a varsity softball field in the corner, so they, and a JV on the other side. So they play right on a big piece of turf that's actually multipurpose. It's not specifically for softball, so.
Have we gotten all the feedback from all of our coaches? Have they looked at all of these plans and?
Not since last Wednesday, no.
Oh, okay. But they've seen, they've seen the initial.
They were in the meeting to help lay it out.
They were.
Initially, yeah.
Okay.
Majority of them.
Been included in some of the email communications.
I think that and the educators that are going to use that, that use that space currently.
One of the biggest complaints, community-wide, I think, from the university is the lack of use. I mean, even within the UW Platteville community, they're not allowed to use the football state, you know? Those spaces that could be multipurpose spaces, they're not allowed to use them for any, anything other than those specific events. So the more multipurpose spaces that we provide, I think, can be nothing but a good thing for our community.
Can we include, I noticed there's no Wi-Fi access or data, like a Wi-Fi hotspot or something, or an access point? Is that something that could be considered, just to bring more academic, potential academic uses to that space?
Yes, it will be incorporated with these spaces, but the argument is referendum is a 20-year commitment. Technology is about a three-year lifespan. So it's better for the district just to, in, in our budgeting process as we go forward, we take care of that technology.
We did talk about all that in the operations meeting that day, was that the district would take that responsibility out of our normal operating budget.
Out of this.
Got it.
So, and we do have fiber in our budget to get it from the school to that, whatever your concession building would be, and then from there, right, however you would Wi-Fi that, is that what you were saying?
Yeah, because also for streaming purposes.
Yes.
Everything is streamed now, so you want to have all the fiber and everything up there, so that no matter what event is happening, that, that can all be streamed, so people can watch it from their, their couch if they want.
Yep.
So when we were looking at the estimated tax impact on slide number seven that you presented earlier, you'd added $36 million, 68 cents impact on the mill rate. The current option two is 35.2, which is less than that.
Yeah.
I'm hearing all of the different options that, different reasons why we would want to have this open to the entire community. I think turf makes the most sense, because we can do exactly what we said we were going to do, is make this truly a community center that the school's providing. So to me, option two makes the most sense.
I would agree with that. From the standpoint that we also took away, we took away an opportu, by reducing the scope of our project. We took away an opportunity with the indoor track and the fitness center for right now. You know, to offer something to public. The other thing is that I think potentially is a big thing, and I've heard this out in the public, and not from people with public school kids, but is the potential to have the track redone and have lights on the track, because once again, that expands the potential times the track can be used also. So that's another big thing, that we're giving back to the public then.
I also agree with option two. Personal experience of practicing on a grass field, it is just a practice field, you got more tore up on that field than you ever did on the actual game field. So having a high-quality field for practice definitely appeals to athletes.
So I am picking up, option two is, and we'll start building this again tomorrow. We have bi-weekly meetings with our, with our team. And this then allows us to look at option two and take the next step, is to further refine the scope and, and just a reminder of the, the timeframe we're up against. Throughout the summer, we keep reviewing, getting more detailed, working on our estimates. And then in August, we have a complete package, completely defined for our community, take that to a resolution, and then we work hard until November, and then we allow our community to vote.
Any other questions before we move on? Thank you all for coming. Really appreciate it. Thank you. Moving on to items on the consent agenda.
Within the consent agenda, we have 5A, the adoption of, 5B, the minutes of a previous meeting, May 25th, regular school board meeting. Item C, we have the financial report and bills for the month of May, in which total receipts, $230,094.80. Total disbursements, $2,4,259.54. I would like to point out, that's a big difference. Understand at the annual meeting, we will once again be approving the ability to short-term borrow. And this is a good example, our district has regular payroll. That doesn't change throughout the year. What does change are the different amounts of money that the state then provides for us as we go through the year. It's irregular, there's different percentages, and this is one of those low spots. In 5D, for donations. Oh, it's already up. Through April and May, a variety of individuals and organizations have donated a grand total of $18,390, $390.68. And with a lot of these donations, it's directly right to students, which is outstanding. Letter E, we have the co-curricular hire of a head football coach, Bryce Arnison. Letter F, we have the resignation of sixth-grade ELA teacher, Kim Morrow. Letter G, the resignation of elementary interventionist, Aaron Wernemont. And letter H is the resignation of special education assistant effective the end of the year, which we're there. Adam Reader.
So move. Second.
Motion by Kurt, second by Matt, to approve the items on the consent agenda as presented. Any questions or discussion on those? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So move. Second.
Motion by Colleen, second by Jen, to approve the agenda. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. On to action items. New high school math teacher.
It's my recommendation that the board approves a contract for Elizabeth Mollers, the high school mathematics teacher. Position that's open.
So move.
I heard Colleen first, so.
Second.
Motion by Colleen, second by Matt, to approve the hiring of Elizabeth Mollers as high school math teacher. Any questions or comments on that?
Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Fourth grade teacher.
It is our recommendation that the board offers a contract to Aaron Collins for the fourth grade teacher. Position that is currently open at Westview Elementary.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ben, second by Lisa, to approve the hiring of Aaron Collins, fourth grade teacher. Any questions or comments on that?
Go Duhawks.
What's that?
Go Duhawks, she's from.
All right. Ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. New co-curricular positions.
This has been, it's traveled through committee, and this is the, the intent of our district to increase learning opportunities for our students through these co-curricular positions.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Kurt, second by Jen, to approve the new co-curricular positions as presented. Any questions or comments on those? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Reading curriculum purchase.
So the funding amount for this reading curriculum purchase has already been assigned through SER III. What grade seven through 12 English Language Arts wanted to do is pilot a program before committing significant money to that program. That's what this year did. They went through a program, and this is the one that they want to invest in. An example of what the pilot provided for us is the lesson, their online offering did not sync very well with what we have, and it was just not user-friendly. So that was pulled off of the bid, and this, that's the value of piloting. You can take it for a test run. And just to repeat, this is already captured through our SER III budgets.
Can we ask questions?
Oh, yeah. Please do.
So the, when I look at the quote, it says five-year digital coursework license. That's not the online portion, or what is?
Let me be more specific. Online resources for staff, yes. Online interaction with student assignments and learning didn't work so well.
Got it.
Especially trying to jump that into Schoology. It fell apart.
Yeah, Schoology, very user-friendly.
Can I clarify something on that, Jim?
Please do.
There, there was no cost difference between including that in the bid. The consumables that we're purchasing would be for five years. They, they have recognized some of the weaknesses with their online programs, and they are doing a pretty significant revision. We will still have access to that, we can continue to utilize that, but the, the purchase price is for the five years of the consumables, which is the student, yeah, student workbooks, if you want to think of it like that. There, there are differentiated materials within that that the teachers have access to and will be able to print off as PDFs, which is what I think Jim was referring to. But we, we still continue to have the availability to use their online platform, it's just that it needs to be restructured. They recognize that, and they're in the process of doing it.
Thank you.
So the workbook actually is the textbook?
Correct.
So the kids can annotate on the text, right?
Yeah, and that was one of the things that the teachers really liked about it, was that was theirs. They were highlighting, they were using that for annotation, and it may be their own.
And with the amount that we're spending, does it, do you feel like you have buy-in 712? Or is it 12?
712, yes. It's a little deceiving at the high school, because it will not necessarily connect with the two AP offerings. Their curriculum's a little different, which is why some of the numbers are a little bit off. But I think because of the ordering, we'll probably have enough consumables for six years with the AP offerings kind of pulling 40 or 50. years, with the, the AP offerings kind of pulling 40 or 50 kids out each year. So, like, I guess that's kind of a positive.
And then as far as staff support and giving teachers the opportunity to prepare over the summer, and?
That's going to be one of the next steps, is after it kind of gets approved, is we're going to be setting up some summer PD with, with my perspectives, so the teachers have access and can kind of work through some. We, we did it last year, but I think it was more of a sales pitch, because they, they want our business. And I think this year, it's going to be more the consumables of, hey, here's how we can benefit students. That's the goal, anyway, as we're setting up.
And last question, is this the cornerstone of ELA, or is this a supplement to other things that they're doing?
Great question. So this is in alignment with the essential learning outcomes that have been identified. It is not going to replace those, that it would support those essential learning outcomes that have, that have been identified. So, supplement, what, kind of a heavy supplement, I guess, would maybe be how I would describe it.
So teachers would have the flexibility to?
Yes.
Not use it?
Yep. And, and that was one of the other things with the pilot, was that they recommended, and they're trying to sell their product, but two workbooks per, for grade level, and it, it got very repetitive. So one of the other adjustments that we made was, there's one per grade level, and we're pulling out, I think each workbook was four modules, four to five modules, so, yeah, each year. We can speak to some of this, too. It was four to five modules, and they felt like that hit those standards that we wanted the support for.
And you feel like the text inside the workbooks and the text is diverse?
I can speak a little bit to that, and Renee maybe could speak to some more of that as well. They, when they were reviewing curriculum last year, there was a formula that they used, and I think it was a four-point scale or a five-point scale. Though my perspective, the curriculum scored the highest in terms of authentic voice and diversity, which was one of the biggest reasons that that was the program that we piloted, because we felt like that was one of the biggest weaknesses in, in some of the current offerings that we had for curriculum.
I'm all done. Sorry.
Looking for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Kurt, second by, I heard Colleen first. To approve the reading curriculum purchase as presented. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Onto the second and final reading of the plethora of 700 policies.
These 700 policies have not been altered since they have had their first reading.
Second.
Motion by Kurt, second by Ben, to approve the second and final reading of the 700 policies as presented. Any questions or comments on those? Hearing none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries, administrative restructuring.
This was a discussion item that was brought forward at our last meeting. To summarize it, in the middle school, we would be moving away from a principal-assistant principal structure, and we would be incorporating a principal and a two-guidance counselor structure, and then creating a position, more of a district position, the director, continuous improvement. Three main purposes behind that would be district assessment coordinator, PLC, leadership guide, resource, to, to continue to move our district forward, and that third piece is that continuous improvement. Working alongside of our existing academic and career plans, our existing, all, all of the, the College Now programs that we have, but building stronger relationships with our community, and having our community support our students through apprenticeships, through partnerships, through exposure to careers, and then also really strengthening our ability to transcript credits in our building with our teachers, so our students can go to Southwest Tech with transcripted credits, can go to UW-Platteville with those transcripted credits.
I think it, and I know Jordy and I talked a little bit this past week, had asked if we could touch base, but that, the whole work-based learning continuum of the exposure, I mean, Betsy, you were talking about how at, at the event, you know, the, the littles, I can remember my, my two boys, when they're asked what they're going to be when they go across that bridge in the elementary school, and, you know, they, although when one kid says one thing, I think there are several paleontologists in one.
Full class of.
But the idea of, you know, the exposure, the awareness, I think that is really going to help even that component of our school report card, the work-based learning element, if, by strengthening this position.
Okay.
Looking for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Colleen, second by Lisa, to approve the administrative restructuring for 2022, 2023. Any other questions or comments on that? Hearing none, we will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. New hire, director of continuous improvement.
It's my recommendation to offer the position of director of continuous improvement to Brad Brokley.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Matt, second by Kurt, to approve the new director of continuous improvement, Brad Brokley. Any questions or comments on that? Hearing none, we will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Abstentions. Motion carries. At this time pursuant to statute number 19.85 Parent C, we will adjourn to executive session for superintendent evaluation of contract. Understand that we will entertain afterward a motion to reconvene to open session, and upon open session, we will maybe take some action that is necessary and appropriate, or we will entertain a motion to adjourn. This will require a roll call vote. Jessica?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Yes. Ben?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Betsy?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
At this time, we are in executive, or closed session, 18, or 8:30.